Basically, I'mma just tease him with a, at the end, tease him with a, like, I got a surefire way, like, method. You know, that, that you can begin drop shipping with zero dollars down, you know what I'm saying? And then, if you interested, I'mma end it with, if you interested, just click the link in my bio for the free class on October first. So I'm basically gonna use tonight as a, as a, like, I mean, as like a break in the ice type of situation.
Right, right. See, that's, that's the thing though. We gotta stick to that schedule. That's the whole point of having a schedule.
You know, you, you right about that.
I was slipping. I just, I just had to push my live button right now. Like, it say two lives. I need to go two lives. We gonna hit this button right now. Yeah, I can be doing my live while I'm sitting here, uh, working.
Facts. Alright, so I'm, I'm sending the link. Page is delivered. Oh, okay, there we go. There we go. We in there. Yes, sir. That's simple.
I told you. I told you.
That's simple.
What's going on with you, sis? Yeah, man, we just on here. We in the Discord chat, uh, so you can hop on over there.
That being said, um, I'm trying to think, what else is it, uh? What else is it that I needed to actually do? Oh, okay, I know what, I know what I need to do. I need to, uh, I need to finish taking my products that I get on Facebook Marketplace and add them, like, to my website. Or would you recommend, basically, just wait until somebody is will, wanting to make their purchase and then upload it to the website?
I have all my stuff preset already.
Alright, 'cause I was thinking, like, if they go to the website, they click on the link and it already got, like, filled with products in it, just make it look more like a special.
Yeah, that's how, that's how I do it. So it's just easy, it's quick and easy. I just create a little bitly link and shoot them a bitly link and, uh, that way it's not all super long or whatever.
A bitly link, so is, is that like, uh, it take yo, yo link and it like shorten it for you?
Yeah, make it way shorter. Hold on, I'mma drop it in the, uh, in the text, text chat. Bam. Yeah, use that link. Oh, you on this thing?
Indeed.
I bet you guys up the live with me right here. What's the deal, man?
Uh, I gotta create the, uh, account first before they let me, uh, shorten the link.
Um, I think so. Created an account in a while. I think I did mine for free. Uh, uh, it is free, but, um, I don't even know. I don't know. I think so.
Yep, it is. I, I just created one. I guess, uh, when you pay, it just, basically, you get the customized exactly like what your link say.
That's the next step. I'm growing this thing, you feel me? We gonna get there, bro. We gonna get there. Did I tell you we gonna get there? It's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna be something powerful. I already see it.
Man, that's why, that's why I'm just, man, I, I'm trying to keep my focus on the vision, man. Keep my focus on the vision and just trust the process. That's my main.
Tighten up, tighten up everywhere. Hey, hey, good news, bruh. I passed my letter.
Yeah. Go crazy, that's what's up. Hey, that's what's up.
My letter, man. Officially Dwayne X, you hear me?
Congratulations, my boy. Congratulations, man.
Yes, sir. Appreciate that. That's lit right there. So I'll be on.
That's definitely lit. I'm gonna be there, I'm gonna be there shortly, though. I'm gonna be there shortly.
That's right. Praise me to Allah. Man, you just gotta write that letter, ladies. It's, it took me, uh, no lie. I was writing a letter. I did a letter every day. I just wrote a letter every day. So I can get used to the writing and the handwriting and the way that it was. And then, the first one I sent, it didn't pass, but that second one, it passed.
That most definitely, most definitely, that's what's up, man. It don't get no better than that.
On Saturday. I do my, uh, recitation on Saturday.
Oh, my goodness. Man, I ain't gonna lie, this be goosebumps. I feel like it's me finna go do it.
Yeah, I do my recitation, bro. I'm a F O I, you feel me? Official.
Well, that's, that's, that's the goal. Well, I swear, that's what's up, man. I ain't gonna lie. I know, I know the journey definitely wasn't easy and, you know what I'm saying? But, hey, hey, you made it, though. Made.
Yeah.
Okay, now, there it is.
I'm trying to find a V A. I need that.
You talking about a V A? Like, as far as, um, um, your page?
I'm, uh, nah, alright, so like, three people reached out to me. For a social media manager, you feel me? For somebody that can manage, uh, social media. And you know, through the teachings of the ABS tribe, B W O, I don't turn down nothing else. You know, me and my team get it done, you feel me? Me and my team can definitely get it done and, and hold time. And I drop, I drop, uh, virtual assist, I drop ship virtual assistants to you, baby.
Literally, that's why I say you can drop ship. What you say, literally, anything. Literally.
So that's what I'm doing right now. I'm about to go hire me a V A. They gonna charge me a price and then I'mma charge them a price. And I'mma get a profit out the deal. And I don't do no work.
None whatsoever. You just basically, you just basically the bridge. You the bridge in between gap.
That's what I love about dropshipping, bro. You can do it with anything, anything.
And it's like, man, if it's something that you don't, that you don't think that you can drop ship, it's because of you. It's literally, it's literally because of you. It's your own, you, your own mind. Like, I had to literally just sit down one day and just literally, like, not just say it, but grasp the concept that you literally drop ship anything, anything. Like, just about how, like, how valuable that product is, man. If, if, uh, if you got a product, I, I'm not for sure if brother being said this or not, but basically, man, um, something that is such, like, when it comes to exchange and value, like, it wouldn't be hard to explain why air is valuable to somebody. So it wouldn't be hard to sell oxygen to somebody because we need oxygen to breathe, to let alone live. Like, that's why it is so valuable. So you need something, it was him. It was either him or Brother Jake, but I know for a fact, they were saying, like, basically, if you can find, if your product is damn near as valuable as air, as you need air to breathe, then, like, the money side is gonna come. It's just about the value, man. It's about the value. I don't know, my mindset was just on the quick money. That's how I got into the dropship. It was on the quick money at first. And, um, I'm like, who would've thought, five, six months later, you know what I'm saying, we at where we at now, working on what we working on now, you know? Just from me seeing it all, man, I could just put something on Facebook and somebody bought it and I get the money for it. I'll be walking out, just like, what? I need spread, I need to do this. Let me get on this. And it did not go, it did not go how I thought it was. It was not that sweet. It definitely was not that sweet. But three months later, show enough, I, I forget, I, I gave up on dropship. I'ma be honest. I gave up on dropship. Like, it came across my mind, but I'm like, man, I went hard for like a good three months, man. I ain't got no sale, but I wasn't, I wasn't researching the products the right way. I wasn't, you know, I wasn't doing everything that I possibly could, you know? And, but, was crazy, though, I did something right, 'cause once I got that sale, it was for, it was for, uh, mini projector. And I sold it for, I sold it for a hundred and seventy-five dollars. And it costed like, maybe like sixty-five dollars. Like, I, I was like, what? The money went to my PayPal, I'm talking about, um, but I didn't know that sometimes PayPal hold the money. You know, like, they hold the money. So I'm like, oh, yeah, I'm finna get paid. I'm finna, you know what I'm saying? I'm finna have a little money in my pocket. No, no sir. Then the next thing came, and I'm like, bruh, are you serious? Are you, are you serious, man? Pending, what they mean pending? I'm, I'm hitting the lady up, like, asking her, does she do everything on? And at this point, I'm sounding real thirsty for some money. Like, I didn't, I ain't, I wasn't trying to scam her or nothing like that, but I just real thirsty for some money. And, I'm like, man, I, I'm, I'm nervous, my stomach in the night, like, I'm sweating, I can't stop thinking about it, I can't nothing. I'm like, like, nah, bruh. No sir. So, um, like, that just, that lowkey, that, that lowkey basically tied to, you know, what's to come on the first October, man, you know what I'm saying? Because that problem that I was having, hey, we now got the solution to that problem, man, like, literally, the solution to that problem, that would never be no issue again. Like, bruh, like, bruh, that, that's just dope. I ain't gonna lie, that's just dope.
It's about to be.
Real, and I'm.
It's about to be lit. I, uh, you know, I've been, I've been, I've been dropshipping for, for a little while now, so I'm kinda getting it. I, I ain't kinda getting the hang of it. Now I'm starting to expand to different markets, 'cause you know, my focus, my baby has been eBay. You know what I'm saying? I've been focusing on the eBay market, and I done got that thing up to where it damn near run itself. I ain't even, I'm not even really monitoring it like that. I just gotta monitor the V A. You feel me? So, so, uh, and like, the process that I've been through building this, you know, just in my, my, my short history, my story, you know what I mean? Just starting over some stores, I had to start over because, you know, I, I was on parole and shit. So a nigga had to, I had to go down and on a little violation, and I had to come back, you feel me, and rebuild that store. And then it got to those, to a point where it was like, let me just, let me just see if I can do it off the dribble. So I closed my store just because, and rebuilt that thing, you feel me? And I noticed, like, I'm hitting. Every time I rebuilt the store, I found a proven method, you know what I mean? That's why I was like, okay. Now it's time for a course. Now it's time for me to teach everybody else how to do this thing. So, uh, Shopify. I already did Shopify. That, that's where I started at, was Shopify. I did Shopify, and then, uh, then I went over to eBay, because eBay was more lucrative than Shopify. I got a quicker return on everything that I put in. My Shopify was slow because you gotta drive your own traffic. To see, you gotta, you gotta art, you do art, your art is fire, you feel me? So you driving traffic, it ain't nothing.
Alright, I'm talking about, for real, for real. See, I got discouraged from Shopify because, like, and see, I'm, man, I would be the perfect candidate, like, I'm, I'm the ideal, I'm the ideal audience when it come to the, the Facebook Marketplace dropshipping, because what discouraged me from Shopify, which I didn't even know about the eBay, like, as far as when it come to just creating an account, a, a eBay account, I didn't even do that, just because when I seen Shopify, you get like a two-week free, um, trial, but then you gotta pay. And I ain't have no money, no job, no nothing, so everybody keep on saying, oh, start dropshipping and get you this money for free. And it's like, well, damn, now I need money for this. And then I get the money for this, and I be like, okay, now I'm finna get this profit from this now. And then bam, the next thing pop up. I'm like, oh, my goodness. It's like, everything keeping me from getting my money, man. But I'm like, you know what, let me stop focusing on the money and let me just, like, actually try to break this down. You know, like, let me try to, like, actually figure this out. And the first sale that I get without having to use, um, without having to, like, pay out of my own pocket to fulfill the order, it was that six-can mini fridge. And basically, um, basically, what I did was, um, I basically told the customer, like, man, my Facebook Marketplace not working, um, so it'd be best if, like, I just send you a, uh, uh, um, secure uh, invoice through PayPal. And, you know, long story short, they, they went through, they was trusting it, and we did that. That's, that's fine, but everybody not like this. I'm like, okay, this is a method that work, but is it like, sure to work? So the, like, the next two sales, when it came to me getting my next two sales, I missed out on them, actually, because when I told them to send the invoice, um, to PayPal, actually, one of them sent it, but it's still, you still needed to enter a tracking number before you get any funds. Before you get any funds whatsoever with an invoice. I'm like, what? I'm like, what? But then the, the second guy, he was just like, nah, I don't, I don't feel comfortable doing that. I've been scammed before. So I'm like, okay. Now that just raised another flag. We found another problem, you know what I'm saying, in, in the, in the process. And that's when, it just, I guess, man, it just, God work it. Like, like, I, I seen your page and then, uh, you know, I tapped in with you and, like, it's just like, man, eh, it just, like, when you had a, a spark to, to fumes, man, just like a, a fire, man, and it just came, like, it just came. I, I love how, I love how, basically, like, we fed off each other, you know? Like, because what I think, like, just, the whole process that you had going on, I felt like your coaches. I felt, I'm like, man, he only doing this shit for how much money? Is you ser- I'm talking about, you heard the conversation when you called, when we were chopping it up. I was turned up. I was happy, excited, like, this, this, this can't be real, where, like, is this really happening at this price? Like, for real? You know what I'm saying? And then, once I start seeing the results from it, when I start seeing the results from it, it just like, black people not used to things going right. Well, I know where I'm from. So, when things start going right, you get nervous. You know, like, his stomach getting in the night, I'm, I'm like, I'm, I'm real nervous, man, like, something ain't fin- something ain't finna crack, something ain't finna go right. But see, I, I was nervous because in the back of my mind, really, I was still only thinking about getting some quick money. I was still only thinking about getting some quick money. I wasn't thinking about actually, let me, let me learn dropshipping in and out, you know? And, and focus on being the best dropshipper I can be, and then I focus on getting some money. It was, I was still anxious to get some money, and that's when I was trying to take shortcuts and, you know, I'm still trying to find little, you know, be lazy and, and, and find little ways to get over things and here and there. And then that's when I started getting orders that I wasn't ready for. I wasn't ready for, man, and, and that, like, you know, it's all about solving problems. So I was just thinking, like, man, what if, I could, what if we can use this Facebook Marketplace to do that? But then, at the same time, though, you even, like, you took that and, like, like, how I go, you amplified it even more with, with, with the information that you had, you know what I'm saying? With the whole being able to set up websites, and it just like, I don't know, it's like the chemistry was just on point, man. I ain't gonna lie, the chemistry was on point. And it's like, dang, we solving a problem, you know? Like, this is a, we solving a problem because anybody that watched this, whether you watching it now or you gonna watch it later, man, you don't have to be a full-time dropshipper. This can just be a stepping stone to allow you to buy your time back, you know? Like, you can, or let's say the pandemic going on, and, and your job require you to get a vaccine, but because of your beliefs, you don't wanna get the vaccine, so you lose your job, you know? When people don't have, like Brother Bean say, they don't have them extra legs on the table, you know, them streams of income, then, basically, that's that, you, you, uh, one big blow to that one leg on that table. So many tables gonna be collapsing. So many tables is gonna be collapsing, because that job, that one job that they have is the only thing that they know. And it's people who have the funds to even do the eBay shop. I know plenty of people who got plenty of money, they can open ten eBay shops. But because they don't have this information, they, they don't even, they wouldn't even know they could have been bought their time back to, to put towards the things that matter. So you don't have to be a full-time dropshipper. You could just do this to make you a little extra bread, to save and invest in what you really wanna do, you know? And, or, or you could take it all away. You could take it all away, do it full-time. The choice is up, up to you, but at the end of the day, this is a valuable, this is a valuable skill that you can have under your belt. You could teach to your kids, you know what I'm saying? They can make their own allowance. They can spend an hour after they get home from school, post some products on their Facebook Marketplace or on their eBay or any, whatever platform that they use, and while they at school the next day, they can be making money. And when they get home from school, they get their own allowance. You know? Like, like, man, and, and I hear so many people, I know so many hard-working people, and you know what they say, I'm grinding, 'cause when, when it's time to pay them bills, if you don't grind and go work, you can't pay them bills. Yes, that is true. But at the same time, though, imagine if you could put that same energy within yourself, within yourself. Like, facts, man. Like, at, at your job, let's say you got a good job, a, a, a job so good, you make a hundred dollars an hour. You still only can make twenty-four hundred dollars cap in a day. So, and, nobody's finna work, nobody's finna work twenty-four hours, and even after you work twenty-four hours, um, even after you work those twenty-four hours, after the taxes get took out, you still not gonna have twenty-four hundred dollars. But if you got a hundred-dollar product, that's more valuable, that's just as valuable as we need oxygen to breathe, and you got a hundred people who bought that hundred-dollar product, how much money is that? You know what I'm saying? In a day. In a day, a hundred followers is not nothing at all. Nothing at all. You know what I'm saying? So them same principles can go towards dropshipping, man. If you got some products, you know, you got you some products that are very valuable, you know what I'm saying, that, that's in trend, uh, uh, that solve a lot of problems for people, man, then you might see a hundred people buy your product in a day. And if that product costs ten dollars, only ten dollars, it costs five, but you put it on your page for ten, you know what I'm saying? And they buy it, and you follow this Facebook Marketplace method, man, it's really not gonna be no fees like that or none of that. So with that being said, with that being said, what's, what's a hundred times ten, man? Come on, it's a thousand dollars. And if you, and if, if the product costs five dollars, so you making five dollars profit off each one, that's five hundred dollars in your pocket that you can make in a day off a ten-dollar product that's valuable to a hundred people. Uh, literally, literally. And if you can do that every single day in just one month, that'd be how much money? That'd be how much money, bruh? That'd be fifteen thousand dollars. Thirty, thirty thousand gross, but fifteen thousand dollars profit. And, and, and it's, how can I put it? It's simple. It's simple. I ain't gonna say it's hard, but it's not easy, though, because, you know, it take, you know, when it come to researching them products, you might think, oh, yeah, this, this product, wow, look at this. I seen somebody post a video about this on Facebook, it got like a hundred thousand views, like, people must like this. And then two weeks go by with the product on your page, and you not getting no bites. None. You like, what? I knew this was hot, man. Everybody got one of these, man. Why is this not hot? Because, man, it's, like I said, it, it, it's not, it's not complicated. It's actually simple, but you still gotta put some work in, man. At, at, at the end of the day, at the end of the day, man, you know what I'm saying? And my mindset for the dropshipping in the beginning was not right. It, it was not right, man. I was, it was not right. Because if I was smart, the money that I was making, those few sales that I did get, I would've been putting that money to the side. So when I actually do get towards working towards a store, or I do get in a predicament to where I have to fulfill an order, which that's not gonna be the case, but I'm just saying, I would be, I would've been prepared for that. I would've been prepared for that, but I wasn't. So people will see you making all this money on dropshipping or whatever it is you doing, and they'd be like, man, I want that. That is what I want. But when you get it, are you ready for it? Are you ready for it, though? That's the question you gotta ask yourself, man. For real, you know? And I wasn't ready for it. You blessed me, and I wasn't ready for it. I just wasn't ready for it.
Hey, I, I be trying to tell, I be trying to let people know, like, bruh, you gonna start out, and it's gonna seem slow for like the first couple days, the first week or two, you feel me? But once them orders start coming, nigga, they coming. They coming.
They coming.
Just like, oh, oh. You get overran.
Alright, and then that's what, that's what I mean. You hear me? And then, then we, we blowing you up, like, oh, what we do? What we supposed to do? You know? But what's crazy, though, what I, what I love about, what I love about, just like, like, the whole, the whole point behind all of this, though, especially with the upcoming, uh, what the F is, uh, Facebook Marketplace, you see how that, like, that was a, that was an up-and-coming problem, you know? Even after you put that work in just to make this course. And then what happened? Another problem arose. Okay, now you get people interested, but it's like, they not, they not ready. They interested, but they not ready. So this, boy, y'all better hit that link, y'all better hit that link in that description, because who you know finna take your problems and then solve it for you? Like, like, come on now, like, because, alright, y'all complaining, we can't, y'all can't fulfill these orders, I see y'all not ready. This what I'ma do for y'all. We got a way where you ain't even gotta go through all of that, like, that just, I don't know, it's keep, it's just baffling my brain. I don't even sometimes even know what to say, like, it's just, what's powerful, man? And if somebody, if you take this serious and you really wanna put that little work in, whether that just be an hour or two out your day, it'll literally change your life, man.
This Facebook Marketplace.
Man, and that, lit. Lit ain't even the word, man. Well, I don't even know the word. Get lit, it's gonna be ignorant, like, man, y'all miss out if y'all want to.
I'm about to bring it down so simple, and make it so, so, like, you, you got the course, bro. You know, the course is already simplified. Like, you can't, you can't really go wrong with it. It's step, it's literally step by step, but,
Literally.
But, you know what I'm saying? So with the Facebook Marketplace, I'mma do the same thing, the same thing. We gonna bust it down step by step. We gonna set up the store properly, make sure all the settings and everything in there is right. You feel me? We gonna do some product research. After I show you how to do that product research, just, just wait. Post them products, them orders gonna come in, you gonna see them results, and you gonna tap in. Watch.
Facts, facts. And it's even, and it's like, it's constantly getting, the process is constantly getting better and better and better, it's constantly evolving and constantly developing, because, because the old problems, like, oh, man, I'm gonna fulfill these orders, that's not gonna, that's not, don't worry. That's a thing of the past. Fulfilling orders, that's the, that's yesterday. This today, like, we, we getting straight, like, straight to it, man. Like, I promise, man. I don't even, I, man, I'm telling y'all. Y'all can hear it in my voice. Y'all gonna hear this in my voice. Y'all can feel the energy. I'm, ain't, ain't no reason a lot of y'all, man. It's like, it's so valuable, man. Like, this is literally free money. You not scamming nobody. Not, none of that. Like, you not doing none of that, man. This is really putting you in a position to, to do what you do. Whether it be, you just want the money, you just gotta be a couple extra bills and you, and you load a, at the end of the month, so you wanna get some money in your pocket. Or if you got this dream and this, this, this dream and this big idea that you been growing in your mind, but you don't got the capital to invest in it, man. You know what I'm saying? This is gonna be like something, a stepping stone that you can use like, to fuel your dreams, bruh. Like, yeah, you know, you getting money, but, but besides the money, because if you are valued, then the money gonna come regardless, you know what I'm saying? But this is just like, making the process a lot easier, you know? You know how many people had to go through half, to figure out how to fulfill orders? And this is gonna be a new breed of dropshippers that don't even gotta fulfill the orders with their own money. I, I can't even, that's how I'mma keep on saying it over and over again, because what they say is about solving problems. So now you, you, you ain't open your store because you ain't had the money to fulfill orders. That's not an excuse no more, so what's next? Ain't no reason for nobody who ever, who watched this live, not to go click their link and go learn how to make you some free money, man. That, like, come on now.
Come on now. All that out the window, that excuse, oh, I ain't got the money to complete the order. Nah, man, we, I done found.
Well, I swear, that, that pumped me, that's what give me energy, like, when I be at work, when I be at work, and I be like, man, bruh, I'm tired of this job. I do not feel like being here. I do not feel like being here, like, man, I feel like slacking off, being lazy, doing my job halfway, I think about that, and I promise, it's like a boost. Then it just like a battery just charged me like. Boy, you better, you better go get this money and do what you gotta do, because, man, you know who, how many people? You know how many people you gonna be letting down by not tapping into that and doing what you need to do, so you can get this information out, man? You know how many people you gonna be, uh, letting down, you know how many people that, that you can help? You know how many people who lives that you can change, and not only can you change and help them, but you will in return be helping yourself.
Facts. Facts. Oh, you cut out on me, brother. Oh, he was going in. Come on, Instagram, uh, it's tripping. Alright, so. Yeah, on the first, we doing that live, man, live free class. What the F is Facebook Marketplace is going up. It's going up. Hold on, let me see if I can get it back in here.